Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Board Meeting. That is Tuesday, January seventeenth. I am the County Board Chair, Todd Wilchin. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman, Commissioner Deb Shore. On my right is Commissioner Roma Amundson and Vice Chair, Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us today from the County Attorney's Office is Mr. Dave Durbin with the County Clerk's Office. We have Ms. Ann Taylor, Ms. Corey Beatty, and with the Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Beatty, if you'd start the agenda.
Sure. Before I begin, I'd like to announce that a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' meeting held on Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other corrections? Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item two is approval of all claims processed through January seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item three is a special presentation. It's a presentation of Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of December to Jennifer DeBurrer, County Extension, in the category of productivity.
I'm Karen Wobig from the Lancaster Extension Office, and actually, I just wanted to kind of publicly thank Jenny for her role in our office. This is a very appropriate award for Jenny, and thank you for selecting her for it. It's in the area of productivity, and Jenny is top-notch when it comes to productivity in our office. She really keeps us shipshape around there, and, you know, she has incredible ability to be accurate and also make sure that we're following rules and regulations. And it's not only a help to our office, but to the county and county taxpayers as well. She doesn't let anything go unnoticed, and it's fantastic for keeping our budget, keeping our office running smoothly. So she is most deserving of this award, so. And I don't know if Jenny wants to introduce, she has some guests with her today.
First of all, I think we have something to read for the public.
Sure, we have the nomination. I'd like to read. Jennifer DeBurrer has been selected as the Commissioners' Award of Excellence winner for December two thousand and sixteen. Jennifer, or Jenny as I know her, works as an administrative aide too for the County Extension Office and began working for the county on January eighth, two thousand and one. She was nominated by Vicky Jedlica, Publication and Resource Assistant, in the category of productivity. In her nomination, Ms. Jedlica states Jenny DeBurrer has been an administrative aide for the Nebraska Extension in Lancaster County since two thousand and twelve. She is the go-to person in our office and puts in extra time and effort to support the rest of the staff and keep the office running smoothly. She works with all office personnel, supervises the county's support staff, communicates with the Extension Board, and interacts with other Lancaster County and UNL administrators. She's also responsible for maintaining the tax revenue account and a multitude of staff programming financial accounts. This involves daily review and processing of purchase orders, annual budget analysis and preparation, and the examining and reporting of routine budgetary expenditures. For the monthly Extension Board meetings, she prepares numerous financial documents and reports. Jennifer's detail-oriented accounting skills and accuracy and record-keeping ensures proper accountability of Lancaster County Extension's budget. Ms. Jedlica continues, during the past two years, Jennifer has been instrumental in two major upgrades to Extension's facility. A new audiovisual system was installed in the conference rooms, and a cubicle renovation was necessary for staff expansion. Her ability to interpret and carry out the regulations, policies, and procedures was key to the successful completion of both projects. In conclusion, Ms. Jedlica states Jennifer always seems to be multitasking and does it exceedingly well. I most appreciate her proactive style, which prevents issues from becoming problems. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Jennifer DeBurrer with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of December two thousand and sixteen.
On behalf of the County Board and all of our employees, as well as the residents, it's my pleasure to present this award to you. County Extension is unique in that you do so many different things out there, so many different skills and talents, and it's someone like you that's behind the scenes, making sure that all the pieces and the parts are operating together. And I also thought about all the different funding sources that you have. It takes somebody pulling all those dollars and ports together. And the nomination failed to mention your positive personality. Every time I see you have a smile, so I know that's greatly appreciated by your coworkers. So, again, congratulations, and let's have a chance to introduce your family.
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the Board for even having an award like this. I appreciate it, and it's a great honor, and I thank Vicky and Karen. And Karen's a great boss, and Vicky's a great support person, and I couldn't do it without all my support staff and everybody in the office. So they make me more productive by being good workers themselves. And so I have my family here, my partner Yan, and then LPS is closed today, so Evan is also here, a five-year-old son. And then I have a daughter that's two, but she didn't make it today because she's at the children's center, so. But, thank you guys for all your support, too.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, too, because whenever I go out there to the County Extension, you know, I see you out there, and just the positive, happy personality, and you really are a very critical employee, and you've done so much. Sixteen years of service, just about.
Yeah.
Boy, time has flown.
It has, definitely.
Well, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Moving on, item number four is public hearings. These are continued from last week. We have, the first one is the Class YK Liquor License Application for Capital View Winery and Vineyards at twenty-three sixty-one Witstruck Road, Roca, Nebraska.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the continuing public hearing for this liquor license application. Anyone here to speak in favor of the application, in opposition, or in a neutral? Seeing none, move on to the next item, please.
The next public hearing is a manager application for Leslie Meyer in connection with a Class YK Liquor License for Capital View Winery and Vineyards located at twenty-three sixty-one Witstruck Road, Roca, Nebraska.
Okay, again, this is a continuation from last week. Anyone here to speak in support, opposition, or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, please move on to the correlating item.
Item five F is a resolution in the matter of application for a Class YK Liquor License for Capital View Winery and Vineyards LLC and a corporate manager liquor license application for Les Meyer in connection with the Class YK Liquor License for Capital View Winery and Vineyards located at twenty-three sixty-one Witstruck Road, Roca, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Going back to item five A under New Business is setting the annual salary for Julie Anne Mertz, Deputy County Attorney, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and forty-four cents as an Attorney One, effective January twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the annual salary for Julie Anne Mertz. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five B is a request from the Human Resources Department to amend Rule nineteen point two of the Personnel Rules regarding vacation leave.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. This amended rule simply aligns what was previously negotiated with AFSMI-A. So for those employees covered by the A pay plan, those who are probationary or part-time not covered by the contract provides for the consistency.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Entertainer motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended rule. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five C is a resolution in the matter of elected official chief deputy salary increases for two thousand and seventeen calendar year.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five D is a resolution in the matter of amending the guidelines regarding the holding of special events in Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This primarily dealt with the management of the insurance. They had to present that.
Correct, yes, this was the item that we discussed at the staff meeting, having to do both the next, this item and I believe the next item. We'll be dealing with that matter. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five E is a resolution in the matter of amending the guidelines for obtaining an amusement license for a public event.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five G is adopting the lobbyist and legislative procedures for the two thousand and seventeen session of the Nebraska Legislature.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five H is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department, County Engineer, Corrections, and Property Management to award a contract for the annual supply of ice melt to Helena Chemical Company, Nebraska Landscape Solutions, Inc., and Omaha Paper Company. The combined amount is not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this recommendation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five I is a recommendation by the Purchasing Department to award a contract to Sap Brothers Petroleum for the annual supply of fuel for a one-year term with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms. The total estimated expenditures for the county during the initial contract term is one million, two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. As many of you are aware, my department serves as the county gas station, and so we acquire all the gas, and then as the officers, whether it be officers or other county employees come to gas up their cars, we bill the individual agencies for the fuel consumed. This includes both diesel and regular gas.
Commissioner Avery?
Pam, is this a wholesale price that you get from Sap Brothers?
That is my understanding. Mr. Walla isn't here to answer the questions about it, but we did competitively bid this contract, and so this is the best price that we could get.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five J is a maintenance agreement with Microfilm Imaging Systems, Inc., in the amount of nine hundred twenty-two dollars for a Canon scanner located in the Clerk of the District Court's Office. Term of the agreement is February first, two thousand and seventeen, to January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this maintenance agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five K is an agreement with Community Alternatives to provide microfilm and scanning services to the Records and Information Management Department. The county will pay up to thirty-six thousand dollars for these services. Term of the agreement is January first, two thousand and seventeen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five L is an interlocal agreement between Lancaster County, on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, and the City of Carney, on behalf of the City of Carney Police Department, to ensure access to a three-D scanner during periods of routine scanner maintenance.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, County Sheriff. We and Carney Police Department both have a three-D scanner that is used to scan and diagram crime scenes, crime scenes and other crash-type cases, and they need periodic maintenance. So we reached an agreement with Carney that if theirs is down for maintenance and they should have an event that requires the scanner, they can use ours and vice versa. There's no cost to Lancaster County, and each of us pays the cost of our own issues with that. So it really just is a contingency. Should ours be not available or theirs not available, then one would be available.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, I just think that this is a marvelous way to cooperate between the different agencies, and it certainly is a very proactive way of dealing with the equipment.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this interlocal agreement. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five M is a grant contract with Clyde Malone Community Center, Inc., to provide funding in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars for the Talented Tenth Scholars Program. Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand and sixteen, through July thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Director for Lincoln, Lancaster County. This contract is for funding from the state-funded community aid dollars. It allows a program for African-American youth, although it's open to all youth, but it targets African-American youth to go to the Malone Center weekly, meet with the two program coordinators that are funded through this, and there's a curriculum in place that they follow. They also provide supper. It's a team-building activity for all of them, very pro-social. They also have mentors that they bring in to help mentor these youth. When I attended there, it's been a few months ago now, but they had about fifteen, sixteen boys there that were very engaged, very engaged in the process, and also very appreciative of the efforts that were put forth from the coordinator and then also funded by the county.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract. Any additional conversation, discussions? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five N is a grant contract with Clyde Malone Community Center, Inc., to provide funding for the Strong and Smart Girls Program. The amendment extends the term of the grant contract from July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
And Bright Lights, I'm sure most people are familiar with Bright Lights. I enrolled my son in a program there this last summer to learn, oh, it was a rocket program, to build rockets, and he learned all of the mathematical equations around rocket building and so forth. Unfortunately, not every child in Lincoln, Lancaster County has the opportunity. I think it's about, it was about a hundred-dollar fee, I think, for that class. And so through this program that's funded through Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds, this allows other kids in Lincoln, Lancaster County who, whose parents are not able to pay that registration fee, to also have the same opportunity that all of our kids have.
Did you get this grant?
Did I? No, this is, this is a county-funded grant, yes. Although I would have, if the opportunity would have presented itself, I definitely would have run this grant for them, yes.
I knew you would.
And they provide transportation as well.
They do, and they provide breakfast, too, for the kids in the program, yes.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this grant contract. Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? Sorry. Are you talking about the Strong and Smart Girls Program? That's done by Bright Lights at the Malone Center?
No, 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 this, that's the next one.
Okay.
Yep, I'll talk about that in just a second.
I think you may have misspoke.
Oh, yeah.
Originally, you did mention Bright Lights, but, yeah, you're run item number N.
Oh, I thought Bright Lights was next. Okay, sorry. Bright Lights is what I was talking about. Okay.
Do you want to explain what the?
Strong Smart Girls, yes. Strong Smart Girls is basically the same as Talented Tenth Program, but we found that having teenage boys and girls in the same program often does not lend itself to a very constructive atmosphere, and so we've separated both of those. So we have the Strong Smart Girls, which are the girls, and then we have the Talented Tenth, which are the boys, so, and thank you for.
Thanks.
And I do have a question. I've noticed that on this one, there is not a, an amount of the funding, and you have funding for the others. Is this?
This was a contract amendment, so it extended the contract that was already in place.
Just extended the contract, okay, gotcha. Okay, so, let me see.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for item number? Yeah, why don't we?
I will pull my, my motion for approval to make it clear that we're all on the same item.
Correct. The second agrees?
Yes.
Okay.
So I will, I will move to approve the grant contract with Clyde Malone for the Strong and Smart Girls Program.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Clyde Malone Center for the Strong and Smart Girls Program. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five O is a grant contract with Bright Lights to provide funding in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Summer Learning Adventures Program. Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand and sixteen, through, I'm thinking this should be June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this contract as amended, from July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five P is a mini-grant contract application award with the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety to provide funding assistance in the amount of seven thousand dollars to acquire digital in-car camera systems.
Terry Wagner, County Sheriff. The Nebraska Office of Highway Safety is a great partner and helps provide funding for a number of safety and traffic enforcement type of efforts. This is one of those where they help fund two cameras. The match will be made up on stop funds, so it'll be no, no cost to the county when it's all said and done.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any questions, sir?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mini-grant contract application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five Qs and Amendment to County Contract C dash thirteen dash zero five nine seven with otter oil and propane for the annual supply of propane. The amendment renews the contract from January first, two thousand and seventeen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The cost to the county is not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five R are amendments to the following contracts for annual fire alarm panel inspection, testing, and repair. The amendments renew the contracts from January nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, through 19th, 2017, through January 18th, 2018. They are for county contract C-16-0039 with ash fire and safety in an amount not to exceed $3,600, and county contract C-16-0040 with Neco Security in an amount not to exceed $2,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve these amendments. County contracts, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5S are political subdivision tort claims filed against Lancaster County by the following individuals: Katrina Santiago for an indeterminate amount, and Casey Mohler in the amount of $304.
I move we deny both tort claims.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny these tort claims. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone here would like to make a comment from the public? Please move on.
Item seven is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, January 19th, 2017, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. Beginning in February, the Lancaster County Board of Equalization will meet on the second and third Tuesdays of each month. The county commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV, Video on Demand, or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that concludes the board meeting. Next, let's move on to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also joining us today in the chambers is Scott Gaines from the County Assessors' Office. First item on the agenda is approval